Good morning, everybody. Just give us a moment and we will begin the meeting shortly. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Mark. Good morning. Okay, we will begin recording shortly. Okay, we are now recording and we welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, December 22nd. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, we will look for any public comment for items not on our agenda today. If there's anyone here for public comment, please feel free to unmute yourself and we'll accept the public comment at this time. Seeing no public comment for items that are not on the agenda, we will welcome public comment when they are under consideration as well. We will look for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting on Tuesday, the 15th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 15th.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. The minutes are approved. Heading into the COVID-19 Planning Response Section, we will turn this over to Margaret. Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning, everyone. The item on the agenda this morning for discussion is the extension of a contract with AMI Expeditionary Healthcare to provide additional COVID-19 testing in Center County from Tuesday, January the 5th, 2021 through January 30th, 2021 in the amount of $316,025.42. As you will recall, we discussed this contract in previous Commissioners' meetings and the amount of the contract that's being presented here today represents about $1,000 a week additional cost to the county. So for our first seven weeks, we were paying approximately $78,000 per week. This is a $79,000 per week extension. I did talk extensively with the AMI folks and they do have supply and demand issues currently made worse or better perhaps on your perspective because now they are also providing vaccine distribution and the number of healthcare workers available to do that has certainly the number, it's harder to get people. So this is the proposal from them. I will also add that we are waiting to hear about the availability of the Nittany Mall. It may be that we need to change locations. AMI is aware of that as well and I just want to be very clear that there is no commitment yet, no commitment yet from the Nittany Mall for our ability to stay at that location. If it turns out that we are not able to stay there, we will identify quickly another location and AMI is certainly willing to work with us on the identification of another, another testing site. But the proposal again is for a four-week period, $79,000 per week. It's actually $79,006. It would include the same hours at 10:00 a.m. to 6:00, 7:00 p.m. and 300 tests per day, which we've been running far underneath for the last couple of weeks. So that is the, the proposal on the table this morning to extend the contract with AMI.
Thank you very much, Margaret. In terms of the location, there, there are several, about two weeks we can utilize to figure that out, find out a new location if, if it's needed. But I do think that this period of testing will be crucial as we will have individuals that will potentially travel after Christmas or even celebrate New Years. And we would want to have testing in place past that. So I think it's appropriate. We do still have some rollover CARES Act dollars that we can spend going into next year. So I do think it's, it's beneficial. And unfortunately, we saw the, it's going to be great to get the money to individuals who are still struggling due to the pandemic businesses as well. But we did not see any local aid to states or localities with this, the, the CARES Act 2, I guess you could say, that's coming through that the House and Senate are approved. So if we had some more money coming through knowing we're testing, we could maybe expand this. But for right now, I think these three, the three weeks that you've identified, I think are really good to have locked down from AMI's perspective. So, so it sounds like if we lock this down, we could look at getting a location. And we have, I know we had some secondary locations when we first started this conversation. It's very confident that somebody or an entity would come forward to be able for us to utilize this. So thank you for the work on this and I would, would wholeheartedly endorse this and support it.
I wanted to check, Margaret, how much was the, the total contract?
For four weeks, it's $316,025.42. On a weekly basis, that breaks down to $79,006. And also remember, this is predicated on 300 tests per day. If at the end of the four weeks, we've tested less than 300 times five times four, then they credit us back money.
All right. And I'm trying to remember, I think you said that they were, they're going to be testing 10 to 7. Is that Tuesday through Saturday?
Yes, we would keep the identical schedule that we've had for the past several weeks, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. 300 tests per day. And I would also add that they do not turn people away either. So if more than 300 people presented, they would continue to test. That, that number is just a number for the construction of the contract mostly.
Right. And to put in average staffing levels and lies and things like that.
That is correct. That is correct.
Yeah. So the, you know, I know if they start going over 300 a day, they do their best, but sometimes then the lines will get a little bit long. And, you know, might have to wait a little bit longer potentially to get a test result. But if I'm doing the math right, that's roughly about 6,000 tests in a four-week period. 300 tests per day. Five days a week, 1,500 tests per week, four weeks, 6,000. So that runs about $52, $53 almost fully loaded costs per day. I think we have a few lodging expenses in this particular life. But that is noticeably less than the couple other suppliers that I surfaced at this, at this volume. So, yeah, Commissioner, point, it's, it's still needed out there. There are substantial number of new COVID infections even in Center County every single day. This is one of the few concrete things that county commissioners can do to assist the local community. I'm hoping we may, may be able to get some slight reimbursement from the states and the feds for this. But regardless, it, it appears to be one of the best things we can do for our citizens. So I'm in favor of moving forward.
I'm in favor as well as, as individuals have to, have to obtain testing or, you know, be tested. You're looking at probably $150 to $200 for that to occur if you don't have some sort of insurance coverage on, in that regard. Plus, one of the other things about this is you don't need a reason to, to be tested. Oftentimes, insurance will require that you exhibit some sort of symptom. In our situation, if, if you have a family member who may have been exposed, this is a very good early detection process for somebody to go through without, you know, no questions asked. You don't need insurance. You don't need, you don't need a lot of the, again, the, the red tape that, that other processes require. Plus, you know, individual may not have insurance. That's, you know, $150 out of pocket is, is significant money. So I would certainly support this, this effort.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for the comments and we would look at this time for a motion to approve.
Let me get back to the minutes here. So motion to extend the contract with AMI Expeditionary Healthcare to provide additional COVID testing in Center County from Tuesday, January 5th through, it's a Saturday, January 30th in the amount of $316,025.42.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. We would welcome any public comment or any other discussion or questions at this time. Seeing and hearing none, we will call the question. All those in favor of approving the contract extension, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay. Thank you very much, Margaret, for this. We appreciate this very much. Okay. Moving forward into our other contract sections, non-COVID related. We will welcome our controller to discuss these next two contracts for us. Good morning, Controller Moser.
Good morning, everyone. Yes. So two contracts here, one for Corn Ferry who acts as the actuary for the retirement fund. And just to note, there's a little typographical error here. This contract extension is not for 2023. It's through December 31st, 2021. And the dollar 85 per statement for pension benefit statements is an optional service. So that's necessarily something we're going to do, but it is just included here in the event we decide to go that route. And then the second one is for the solicitor for our office. And that is to extend that through 2023. So that is correct on that one. And that's just to prevent having to do this every year for that one. So we'll do it for the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will look for any questions at this time. We wrapped up our second to last Retirement Board meeting and this was mentioned as something we needed to take care of for the upcoming year. And so any other questions or any of the other discussion for our controller?
None.
Okay. We look for a motion.
Motion to add the contract extensions with Corn Ferry and Miller Kessler and Campbell to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, questions on, at this time? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we are going to go into Human Services at this time and we would turn it over to Natalie Corman at this time. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the Office of Adult Services, I have before you a contract for the calendar year, January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, for the Office of Adult Services to continue to receive financial management services for, from Service Access and Management. As you know, late this summer, early fall, Adult Services started to work with them as kind of the onslaught of the funding that they were receiving from the state regarding the rental assistance, some additional food money and so forth, kind of came into their world. And they had some staffing that they needed to have assistance with and Sam was able to provide that. As we go into 2021, we wanted to retain the work that they have done for that office in terms of any future audits and monitoring, just some financial oversight. We also continue to anticipate that Adult Services with their Office of Three will continue to have just the actual needs of their services, food pantries, rental assistance and so forth. So staff can dedicate their time to that whilst Sam can provide the financial the financial work that they do for us, check requests, all those kinds of things that, that help us out a lot. Sam is able to do that for them to kind of allow staff to focus on the other work. So they are looking to extend that contract for the next calendar year just to allow the help as we anticipate things will continue to be busy for Adult Services.
Thank you, Natalie. A question on this, in terms of how this was paid for in a pre, in the previous year, 2020, how do we allocate the funds for this?
So we had some funding that we didn't, some personnel money that we saved salary and benefits on because we had the lapse of the program specialists for a time period. So we were able to, to have money there. We've also gotten a bit of admin money from the, from the CARES money that we received, you know, to do the rental assistance money for that we can kind of carry over. So we've been able to, to offset some of those charges with that additional admin money that we had come in. Mind you, little compared to the, the work they did, but we've done that. And we also have just had some of our services due to COVID not fully be able to be utilized. And so we have some service money too that, that can be helped out with. And then additionally, anything pulled from the block grant we can do too. So they've just had some cost opportunities to allow this money to be flexible without taking away from the core of the services they provide.
Okay. So this $48,000 would not impact services for Adult Services in 2021?
Nope. Rental assistance, we would remain what we've been doing. Food money would remain what we've been allocated from the state. The case management services that we do would remain the same. Probably the only service that's been impacted from COVID has been our homemakers. But again, we would allocate that to other services, but it's been some of the admin money that we've been able to have that's been helping to offset.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other comments for this item?
Well, Natalie, I know it's a little early because I'm not even sure if the bill is passed, much less the president signed it. But I believe there's at least discussion of some additional rental assistance in the new year with the new $900 billion bill.
Yeah, 20, 25 billion is included.
And so hopefully Sam will be able to help us distribute that money should, should we actually end up receiving it.
True. Yeah, we will, we will see how that's funneled through our state as the previous money was funneled through PHFA. And we've done it. We'll see how the state determines how they want to allocate that to counties. So, yeah. So, you know, Sam helps us with cutting of actual checks for some of our housing programs separate from what they do for our financial services as well.
Yeah. So that'd be, that'd be great. I, I know there's a lot of people hurting out there right now. So I'm hoping that makes it through.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, we look for a motion to add it to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the contract with Service Access and Management IC to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Natalie.
Thank you.
Our next item is for our correctional facility and we do have some phone numbers on the call. We want to see if our ward in Chris Shell is, is with us today. Okay, it's not looking like he is. Margaret, how would you like to handle this item?
Yes, I would ask that we table this for one week. This is back on the agenda because we are attempting to place a cap on the CPI amount in our five-year contract with Prime Care. And I know that we are working on the language and probably need just a couple of more days to complete this and bring it back to you. So I would request that we table until next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Is there a motion to table this for one week?
Motion to table the contract with Prime Care Medical for an additional week.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. For our next item, we will have a, this will be for our court administration. And I'm not seeing anybody from court. We'll double check.
Kendra is on the phone line. She can speak to this.
I am here.
Good morning, Kendra. The floor is yours.
Good morning.
We're good. Thank you. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you. So the proposal, this is from Nittany Office. So this is regarding the recently constructed rooms in the courthouse that are actually new spaces. So they weren't spaces that were utilized prior to the construction for what they're going to be utilized for now. So because of that, they're going to have to now be furnished so that they can be used. So I did meet with Dave Berger from Nittany Office. He did provide a breakdown and a proposal of furniture for this, for these areas. I believe there are one, two, three, there's four new areas, I believe. Is that correct? That will require furniture. So what Dave Berger presented was a proposal for $27,450.96. I believe this is a discounted amount that the county can receive. But he presented that amount. So we just need approval from the Commissioner's Office. Or if we need to go back and look at some changes, if you would, depending on if you'll, if you'll approve this or not.
Okay. Thank you, Kendra. We did, we did receive, we did receive this and I think the thinking would be that we do have some funds that we can utilize in our capital fund for 2020 prior to the end of the year. And so we would be interested in doing this, I think. And if there's any other questions, we can certainly answer them from Kendra. But it was part of the scope of the project, obviously. We knew that if we needed to renovate these spaces, we needed to furnish them at some point. So we think this is, this could be an ideal time to do it. But any other thoughts or questions for Kendra?
Just.
Well, I'm sorry. Travis. Ah, okay. I think it was just a, okay. I think Commissioner Higgins, the floor is yours.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank Kendra for using a local supplier for this. I know Nittany Office equipment has a great service. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the, the bidding threshold is 28,000, as I recall. Is that correct? This doesn't throw us into a, into a conflict with having to, having to bid this out?
I don't think we've ever, I'm just racking my brain. I don't think for the courthouse annex project or the, you know, the 911 project, we had ever bid out any, any furniture.
Aren't we getting this at Co-Stars and whatnot?
Yeah, is this, is this? Is this Co-Stars?
So, so Nittany Office is a, is a Co-Stars agent. Anyway, I think as long as we keep it up. As long as we keep it under 28,000, I think we're all right. I think that's the bidding threshold.
I think the bidding threshold might be about 21,000 or 22,000. I think, I think it is. It started at 18.5 and it's creeped up with CPI, but I don't think it's reached 28,000. But my recollection is that.
Double check on that before we put, pen to paper.
Okay, we can, we can do that. We could, we could either take a motion to approve it pending Co-Stars or, you know, if they're Co-Stars. Or we can table it for, for a week, whatever's more, whatever we'd like to do.
I don't know. I'd, I'd prefer to try to give them the business as long as we're following all the rules.
Yeah, I don't have any problem as long as, as long as we're following all the protocol.
I would add that we've been told by the Office Furniture, every January 1, furniture suppliers increase their furniture costs. And so there is some need to do this now if possible. We will confirm that in fact, Nittany is a Co-Stars vendor and I will let you know.
Okay. And we can always, we, and unfortunately, we won't be meeting on, on Christmas Eve. So our earliest would be Tuesday of next week. So we can, why don't we table that for a week? Why don't we do that? And if we approve on the 29th, that would so be, be prior to the end of the year, Margaret, correct?
Well, technically, it's, it's before the end of the year. Kendra was given the date of December 23rd, I believe. Is that correct, Kendra?
It was, and it was just for the purpose of ordering, but I don't know, and I can check with Dave that if it would be ordered prior to January 1, if that price would still stand. I don't see why there would be an issue that date was given because of ordering purposes.
I think the, the real issue here, if Dave can probably answer it, is whether or not they are a Co-Stars vendor. And if that's the case, then I, I would have no problem approving it today based on, based on that information. But, you know, I would qualify it with making sure that we were following the bidding process.
I could probably have that answer. Commissioner Pipe, I could probably have that answer for us before we conclude the meeting today.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Why don't we, we'll, we'll come back to this item then. We'll, we'll pause that. And if we could maybe give a call to Dave. Yeah, sure. That'd be great. Great.
Contact with Julie.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So we will then go to the JP Lilly item.
Yes. And I don't know, Chad, are you on this call as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I don't know if you want to begin and I can add some additional information or if you just want me to begin?
Sure, I can, I can get it started. So the JP Lilly put the sound system in our courtroom one and courtroom two desperately needs a sound system as well. So we got a, another quote from JP Lilly. This also includes a evidence presentation platform, which I think Kendra can elaborate on more. But I think that's, you know, it sounds like that's something that's really needed in the courtroom as well. In addition to the sound system, the quote from JP Lilly is for those two for $38,550.
We actually were able to, Chad and I worked with JP Lilly to actually lower this quote, I believe, before it was close to 42,000. So we were able last week to lower the quote. It does include the sound system. It also includes an evidence presentation system, which was not put into courtroom one. It wasn't requested at the time. But this is for an evidence presentation system to assist with trials or if counsel comes to court and needs to show something to all of the participating parties. This, right now, we're using a old white pull-down screen in the courtroom. So this would just allow for updated technology to be able to display evidence to everybody participating in the hearing.
So again, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would just say I would, I would, I would ask the same question about the bidding amount in this regard as well to make sure that we're, we're covered by whatever legal obligations we have.
JP Lilly is a member of Co-Stars. I believe we checked before the courtroom one quote.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, one, one of the things that, one of the questions we had asked a few, few months ago or weeks ago, and it might have even been during the initial allocation of Co, of CARES Act funds that we received through the CRBG program was whether or not an entity needs to be a Co-Stars member or the service they provides needs to be listed on the Co-Stars site. Because I think anybody Um, because I think anybody can essentially go out there and get a Co-Stars uh, you know, or not membership, but designation. But it really is about whether or not the service they provide is listed as a Co-Stars service. And so if we could double-check that or triple-check that, that would be important. But um, so just to be clear, Chad, is it where JP Lilly is a Co-Stars member or the service, this service they provide is a, is listed uh as an amount on the Co-Stars website?
They, they are Co-Stars vim, um, vendor. I'm not sure about the latter, if the service is on there.
Yeah, since, since we've got two items here, we can just double-check that as well. I think it's, I think it's the same thing for Nittany Offices. If Nittany Office is a Co-Stars member, but i- in terms of the service they provides, and it may just be where Betsy may need to weigh in on that in terms of what the designation is uh for that. Um, so I, I, I think we would appreciate that. That, that just would be helpful um for this.
Okay, guys, I, I think you have a partial answer for us. Um, Nittany Office Equipment at one-two-zero-seven South Atherton um is listed uh as a uh Co-Stars member on the original contract dating back to two thousand and six.
I would just add on to that while you were presenting, uh, I was able to uh double-check with Tom and Julie. And the uh companies that Nittany plans to purchase the furniture from are also Co-Star vendors. So um, we would have not only Nittany Office Furniture, but the vendors that um have been selected for furniture are also on Co-Stars.
Okay, but I, 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 again, I think it goes to, i- is it where the vendor needs to be on Co-Stars or is it where the service they provide can be, needs to be listed on Co-Stars?
Well, this is a product, so.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we approve it ba- based on, based on uh approval from our solicitor in regard to these matters?
Now, the Nitt, the Nittany Office one has a more time-sensitive nature. Obviously, as Margaret said, they need to do it by tomorrow. Uh, the JP Lilly one, I don't know if that has a timeframe on it uh in terms of when.
Now.
Okay, okay. So the focus could be on the Nittany Equipment we can approve as, as Commissioner Dersham suggested, pending solicitor approval, that it meets the Co-Stars designation. I think that's a, that's, that's fine. Um, so we could, we could take action on that if we wanted to do that.
Yeah, let's, let's help out a local vendor who's probably really in need of some cash flow right now. So motion to approve the proposal from Nittany Office Equipment, Inc. um pending solicitor approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this question? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. And then for the JP Lilly item, there isn't a time-sensitive nature on it. We can move it to the consent agenda pending solicitor review, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to add the proposal from JP Lilly, Inc. for the renovation of the sound system in courtroom two uh to next week's consent agenda pending solicitor review.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Kendra, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, heading into risk management, we will turn the floor over to Krista Davis. Good morning, Krista.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. Um, there are two items on the agenda under risk management and, and um for ease and explanation, I'll start off with the second item first, because it explains that we have a contract renewal coming before us. So our workers' comp insurance does run um from one-one to twelve-thirty-one each year. And um, we're preparing to renew. Um, thanks to our local agent, the Hartman Group, they um found us um a great rate and that would be staying with our current P, current workers' comp carrier, and that's PMA Insurance. Um, the, I have great financial news for you too, and that is that um they offered us a twelve percent reduction in premiums this year. Um, so the total value of the contract this year is one-hundred-thirty thousand, one-hundred-forty-eight dollars, down eighteen thousand dollars from last year. So um, that's a combination of our agent working for us and um our good claims experience. Um, so that is the first item and we can space them out and I can explain the second one next, if you want to make a motion or however you'd like to do that. But the second one is in tandem with the first.
Explain the second one, yeah.
I'd be happy to. All right, so um, in addition, if you approve this contract, um, there is a required signature on a separate document called the Deductible Reimbursement and Security Agreement. It's a standing document that PMA asks us to review and sign, and it is just um agreeing to and approving uh the fact that we are entering into a high deductible uh program. Um, we have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deductible and the document is such that it just um, it hammers out the details and requires a signature. So that's all in preparation for putting this policy in place for next year. So um, I'm asking for, asking for two action items. One is for the approval of the contract of the renewal. And the second is the signature on the deductible reimbursement and security agreement.
Thank you, Krista. Great news on the reduction.
Yeah, it is.
Hopefully, we can add that into our budget before approval next week and see a little bit of savings in that. Um, uh, not very well outlined. Any, any questions, discussion on, on either of these items?
Great news. Anytime we can save eighteen K, I'm all for it.
Okay, uh, hearing no questions or further discussion, we'd look to motion, uh, look for a motion for next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add risk management items one and two to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 The motion is carried. Krista, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda is a grant conversation for our Planning and Community Development Office. And uh, I believe that we're going to welcome Anne Mezner uh to this, so good morning, Anne.
Morning, everyone. Uh, this is a grant renewal uh with the Highway Safety Network for uh the Community Traffic Safety Program. Um, we have had this before and uh this is a pass-through grant for the uh time period effective October first, twenty-twenty through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And in case you don't know, they provide education both virtually social uh social media and in-person on um things like uh DUI prevention and seatbelt installation.
Okay, thank you very much, Anne. Uh, we look for a, uh, any questions at first, any, any discussion on this? Okay, seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to add the grant agreement with the Highway Safety Network to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Anne. I think we'll see you just in a few moments potentially. Uh, or have, maybe have you available for questions on the liquid fuels items, but uh we have our consent agenda. Would there be a motion to approve our, our consent agenda for today?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on our consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, uh, letters of support, we have none today, but we do have some liquid fuels and fee for low, fee for local use conversations. And we'll start with item A and uh Margaret will turn that one over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. The first item is a payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to Miles Township to pave and widen uh Route eight-sixty-four and repair drainage areas in that road. Um, the second one is a fees for local use application to Pendot from Marion Township to assist with drainage improvements, including replacement of culverts on Wade's Lane and Sand Ridge Road in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. And uh, we have a third one, which is a liquid fuels application to Pendot from Walker Township for replacement of existing pipe and construction of concrete headwalls to repair trench at the roadway in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. And uh, we have Anne here with us this morning and she could add any uh commentary that you might uh be interested in for these three projects.
Okay, thank you very much, Anne. And we do uh understand that you have a presentation for this item D. Uh, but in terms of the first three, um, maybe you could give some context, because some of these may have been from previous years. Some of them may be new applications, so if you could just um provide some context there and then we can go into item D.
Sure, um, the, the first three that you've discussed today are all previous projects uh that uh the county had um allocated funds for these improvements. And uh, they've all been completed and so now they are asking for their reimbursement and they are all very appreciative of the support the county commissioners are giving you, are giving them.
Fantastic, thank you, Anne. Okay, uh, so why don't we look for a motion to approve those payments and then we can go on to the presentation?
Motion to approve payment to Miles Township and submission of the Marion Township and Walker Township applications to Pendot.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, so going into the twenty-twenty-one County Liquid Fuels Program and Fee for Local Use allocations presentation.
Yeah, so it's this time of year where we look uh for applications uh for our liquid fuels and fee for local use. Next slide, please. And just wanted to highlight a couple of things about these uh funding pots, and that is they are for construction, maintenance and repair of roads and bridges. Um, there are some other related expenses that can be used, uh, but we rely on Pendot Publications as our guidance document and District Two to make sure that these projects are meeting the criteria. Next slide, please. Um, in twenty-seventeen, uh, the county developed a local transportation project funding program that included these two funding pots and really um wanted to provide a good mechanism for the liquid fuels program in supporting our municipalities. Uh, also, you established a five-dollar registration fee to supplement the county liquid fuels program. And then at this time, it was um in twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-two, a local bridge program was found to be in us, an item of need. Um, but overall, we want to remain flexible on the annual funding allocations, so we can support the, the programs as well as our municipalities. What we do know now is uh the demand for dollars to continue, continues to exceed the available funding. And this is true for our Fee for Local Use Program, uh, funding for our bridge projects as well as um liquid fuels. And we want to continue to be annual, have flexibility with our annual allocations. This year, we received applications um from twenty municipalities and they were all eligible projects, which was good. But what happened was we had roughly over a million dollars of um requests and we certainly don't have that amount of funding uh to support our uh, our demands. And so what we did was look at those projects and say, okay, how can we uh stretch our dollars? So is the municipality offering a match? What is the problem that needs to be solved at the municipal level? And there's a wide range of problems. Um, you'll see a theme here on the project list that drainage is uh very important to these municipalities. And we have quite a few uh drainage projects as part of the list. And also, when was the last year uh a uh funding allocation was granted to those municipalities? We do have some municipalities that actually have, it's been several years since they've come forward to actually request funds. So here's our table and what this tells us is what we can use, what we have to work with, with liquid fuels. So the top tables are liquid fuels, um, recommendations, and these are uh all projects that are eligible for liquid fuels funds. And they are Boggs Township, Second Avenue, Market Street, uh, which has some drainage problems that they need to resolve. Center Hall Borough, East Locust uh Street would like to do some road repairs, um, since it's in close proximity to their fire hall. College Township has an interesting project where they uh need to have a better railroad signal coordination at Strubel Road and East College Avenue. And um, they need uh some additional funding to close the gap uh with that project. Harris Township, it has been quite a few years since they've made a request and they're looking for some assistance with West Main Street. Snowshoe Township has two roads that really need some help due to some drainage issues and, and they want to uh improve those roadways. Uh, the next list is our draft fee for local use list, and as you can see uh from the previous list, uh, we are working with a hundred and forty thousand dollars from uh liquid fuels. And the fee for local use has provided a really nice supplement for this um program. Because what it's doing is it is expanding the options to municipalities to do some of this work. And so for the, the recommendations for fee for local use, we have Benner Township, uh, Bell Air, I'm sorry, Bellar Hills Road uh to improve drainage along that roadway. Uh, Miles Township needs some road maintenance as well as drainage to improve safety along that road. Patent Township is looking for uh some large portable changeable message signs as well as a mid-size sign uh in order to use throughout their municipality. Uh, Snowshoe Township has two roads, um, Gino Road, I think I'm pronouncing that right. Walnut Road, uh, which needs milling, paving and a scratch coat to improve safety along those roadways. Spring Township has an intersection at Jacksonville Road and Lyons Town Road that is having some uh drainage issues and they really need to rework the intersection. And finally, Unionville Borough High Street needs work with resurfacing shoulder and drainage work. So this is the staff recommendations and I'm willing to take any questions.
But a quick question, Anne. I, I noticed the two portions of the spreadsheet are, are set up in a very similar fashion. But I think between the upper section, which concentrates on liquid fuels and the lower section that concentrates on fee for local use, it looks like you sort of flip the um dollar figures. So the twenty-twenty-one request for the first part is liquid fuels and the twenty-twenty-one request for the fee for local use portion is the fee for local use.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry if I misspoke. I didn't mean to confuse you.
No, so I'm, I'm trying to add it up and so we're, we're putting in about seventy-nine thousand in fee for local use and then two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, um. I'm just trying to add it up here and it's, it's a little difficult since.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So yes, so the first table, it's a hundred and forty thousand, um, that first column.
And we're funding that, that.
That is our recommendation list, yes. And um, that is what Pendot asked us to work with this, this go-around. Uh, for fee for local use, the two-hundred-and-seventy-two and change is the recommended list that we are uh offering. What uh you might find confusing is the second column, uh, we couldn't quite uh fund the entire Snowshoe Township project in its entirety using liquid fuels.
Right.
So we split the project, so that may not be helping the, understanding the tables very well.
Okay, so we've got a hundred and forty thousand in fee for local use, sorry, a hundred and forty thousand in liquid fuels. We have two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand total from the fee for local use. Now, I noticed we're expecting about six-hundred thousand.
That is correct. So this is a, a draft list and we thought these were very strong projects. Um, that should get serious consideration. If you would like us to uh broaden our recommendation list, we can certainly do that.
Well, do we, do we have plans, potentially maybe a bridge or something for the remaining three-hundred thousand plus that's coming in?
We do not.
Okay. Because my, my assumption is if we're gonna spend the money this year as it comes in, we need to have it on the list or, or submit it.
Correct.
And of course, what's interesting is we don't actually have to disperse these funds until maybe the end of twenty-twenty-one or maybe even into twenty-twenty-two, depending on schedules and timeframes.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, we do like to see as much, um, let's say, movement in these projects as possible, so we're not in a situation where uh we have to do a forced distribution uh for the liquid fuels, so that's why we tack. we have to do a forced distribution for the liquid fuels, so that's why we tackle that one first. The Fee for Local Use does not have that requirement. So we do have time to reevaluate and look at those funds if needed.
So Anne, just a few comments and some thoughts here. For the, I know we're moving this to the consent agenda for Tuesday, a week from today. It would be helpful if you could put together for that meeting a slide that would show a graph of the liquid fuels dollars over the last five years. My thinking is that that 140 that we received for 2021 is about $60,000 less than what we typically get. I think we typically get about $200,000. And the thinking would be that since there was not as much gas tax collected due to the pandemic, that the allocations next year are going to be way below where they're typically at. So that would be just interesting to see, or important to note that that is, that amount is decreasing sharply. The second one would be if we could show the funding that we've received from the Fee for Local Use historically over the last five years. I think that number itself has actually climbed, and that was due to the the closing a loophole, I guess you could say, for the $5 fee collected from an annual registration, or a multi-year registration was, the $5 fee was collected each year. So I think this is the highest number we've gotten ever, the $601,000. And kind of going into the third feedback would be, we set up with that program, that 17 to 2022 program, a, basically, an amount that we were going to bank every year from the Fee for Local Use that would be utilized to pull down the federal dollars that we could utilize. And I don't think, I don't know if we've, so it'd be good to get an update on where we stand with that, with pulling that federal money down. And now that we have an increase in the Fee for Local Use that we could potentially move more towards funding some of these projects to go to Commissioner Higgins' point, because I think we were anticipating a 550,000 each year that was going to be received through liquid fuels, I'm sorry, through the $5 fee. And we were going to take off a section of that every year to pull down that federal money. But if we were receiving more $5 fee money, we could potentially push some of that, more of that out to to be spent on the liquid fuels projects that we received. And then lastly, the, I think one of the things that we need to start tracking is we have a column there that's Liquid Fuels Funds Last Received. But we actually, in 2017, I'm sorry, we received the money in 2017 and 2018. And I believe for the 2019 year, we started to allocate the $5 fee as part of the liquid fuels rounds. And I think for Patent Township, for example, even though it's showing them last year that they received liquid fuels, they actually received a project, I believe, in 2019 with $5 fee money. And so that might skew the, you know, when we should be providing them funds, because on the, on paper, it looks like they're one of the last townships that ever got money. But in actuality, they've got a $5 fee allocation in 2019. So I think we may want to go back and find, my suggestion would be, if that is accurate, we may want to go back and find a different project for, instead of Patent Township. We all love Patent Township. But that, I don't think that accurately reflects the last time they got funding. And similarly, for Snowshoe Township, I know Snowshoe Township also, I want to say, received some potentially $5 fee money. I could be wrong on that, but again, in 2019. So again, I think it's just a refresh of that list of last year funds were received, including the $5 fee. I think, I think it's important to make sure we're providing that historical number correctly.
Sure, not a problem. I can do that. If I, if I may, the federal funding that you talked about, we, about drawing down, that was intended for bridge projects. And just by coincidence, this year, we really didn't have any bridge projects. They're really drainage issues that we're seeing. But unfortunately, we just learned that those federal funds are no longer available to us, and it's partial, it's mainly because the funding source has decreased significantly. And that is the federal funding, and they could not support what would be a discretionary funding pot, which is what was called roadmap. And so unfortunately, that is no longer available for our use.
Why don't we have a separate conversation offline regarding that?
Sure.
Okay. But that, that will be important to... That's important to know. Thank you, Anne. Okay, any other feedback on any of these items before we look to move this to the consent agenda?
I'm good.
Commissioner Higgins, anything for you?
No, definitely want to have some additional discussions about some of the other, other funding. But this is a good start. Let's, let's get this moving, and then we can see if we can add some other things later.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. We will look then for a motion?
Motion to add the 2021 Liquid Fuels and Fee for Local Use allocations to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thanks again, Anne. Okay, moving into our administrators' report, Margaret, we'll turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you. This morning, I wanted to discuss briefly the, and ask for your approval of the 2021 county meeting schedule. I believe Natalie is going to screen share a copy of it. This is a requirement of publishing our county meeting schedule so that everyone is aware of the meeting times and locations. And you can see that there are many meetings that fall under this meeting schedule, including the Board of Commissioners, Salary Board, Board of Assessment Appeals, Board of Assessment Revision of Taxes, Board of Elections, Criminal Justice Advisory Board, the Employee Benefits Trust, Finance Committee, Prison Board of Inspectors, Records Improvement Committee, Retirement Board, and a variety of work sessions. This will be published in our local newspapers, but it does speak to the variety, the breadth and depth of the meetings that happen within Center County Government. So I would look for a approval to move forward with the schedule.
Thank you, Margaret. And just to be clear, or maybe if you could highlight, were there any changes from the 2021?
I, I am sorry, I should have said that from the outset. This is identical to 2020.
I think you'll, go ahead.
With the exception of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board dates, they've been updated. That is it.
I think the one that we, I think the only thing that I would suggest us thinking about would be to mention a virtual, the fact that we're going to be virtual, or that they would be, or the link where residents could could click on or go to, that would list when our virtual meetings are happening. I think many of these meetings will be virtual for the good part of the half, of the first half of the year. So maybe we want to mention something about it being, it being virtual.
We could do that. We could also refer people to the website, because we do post all of the virtual connection links on our website, and they, they sometimes change, so that might be a good repository for that information.
Other than that, I didn't have any other feedback on this. Any other feedback, thoughts, questions?
It's good.
I'm all good.
Okay, okay. And then the adoption date would be the 29th of December of this year. We would be looking to do this next week, essentially.
Today, or you could do it next week?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, let's see. We would need to get this published in the paper prior to our first meeting, which would be on the 5th?
Tuesday, January 5th, correct.
Okay, okay. I think we still have time to do it next week. It could be published in times. Why don't we, why don't we make that change to the virtual meeting and then approve it? So we can, we will then see this on the agenda next week, unless there's any other discussion on it at this time?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Natalie. We will then go into our check run for the 18th. Commissioner Higgins?
Sure. Slightly smaller than average check run of $1,177,975.99. We have a broad variety of checks that are going out for the CARES Act grants, but most of those are taken care of now. So I was going to go with a check to the Grove family in the amount of $25,000, obviously a little bigger than normal check. That is a check for an agricultural easement from the Center County Ag Land Preservation Board. I believe it will be the 56th farm that Center County Government and the State of Pennsylvania has preserved in Center County. Not counting the acres on the Grove Farm, I think we're up to 8,205 preserved acres in Center County. So would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated December 18th.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We will then move into our voter registration report for Commissioner Gersham.
All right, we have one this morning. We have a total of 112,275 registered voters in Center County. That comprised of 46,923 Democratic registrants, 162 Green Party, 738 Libertarian, 15,708 No Affiliation, and 44,669, with all there's being 4,077 voters. Again, it's up, that actually is up 141 from my last report. And the feature party today is the NUN Party. And the NUN Party has a staggering number of registrants at 1,797 voters. So the Nuns are a, that's N-O-N-E. So that's a significant, significant force. So we want to thank everybody. What's that?
Not the N-U-N Party?
No, that is that is, let's see, N-O-N-E. So none, as in nothing. But anyways, that being said, let's see, Bellefonte, let's see, the precinct feature this week is Bellefonte South 3. Registered voters, 729, ballots cast, 509. Percentage turnout is 69.82%. And that is, that would be the Bellefonte South is votes at Lambert Hall at, on 303 Forge Road. Okay, we also have the folks that make it happen at Precinct 3, and that is Carl Hill. He's the judge of elections. Lois Krebs is the minority inspector. Dorothy Watson, the majority inspector. Jean Brown, Emily Gregory, and Jennifer Nadolsky are the, are the clerks. So we want to thank actually the, I guess it'd be the Undine Fire Company and all the folks that make it happen for Precinct 3. So there you have it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, very much. All right, and we will look at our announcements that would note, we would note that on Thursday this week and Friday of this week, we will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. We hope that you all have a Merry Christmas, a wonderful holiday season. And we will be meeting on the 29th, so this will not be the last meeting of the Board of Commissioners for this year. But we, we hope everybody has a merry, merry Christmas. And we would look at any executive sessions to report at this time, Margaret.
The Board of Commissioners met in an executive session on Tuesday, December 15th, from 11:15 a.m. to 11:22 a.m. to discuss a personnel matter. And the Board of Commissioners does need to meet in executive session either before this meeting adjourns or after our Board of Elections meeting.
Okay.
To discuss the personnel matter.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Yeah, let's, I would suggest we would delay it until after we're done with our elections meeting to head into that after this. So we will, we will then be in an executive session later today, and we would report that, the time that we have that for next Tuesday on the 29th. We have no bid proposal, no election announcements. At this time, we will accept any questions from the press at this point. Please feel free to unmute yourself and ask away.
Good morning. This is Marley with the CDT. I just had a question. It's probably one that Margaret can answer about the testing site. If the Nittany Mall doesn't host the testing site, are some of the alternate locations being considered in other parts of the county?
Start to compile a list of alternate sites. There are some that have surfaced already, and we will try to keep it as central to the county as possible so that it's accessible to our residents from all over the county. But much to be determined here, Marley, at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Marley. And any other questions from the press at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'd look for a motion to adjourn our meeting at 11:04.
Motion to adjourn the meeting at 11:04.
I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great day.